Welcome everybody to this town hall. I'm not sure which number of town hall this is, it should be ninety something, maybe even a hundred, does anybody know? But anyways, um. We'll dive into the topics, Peter can join us today, he's not feeling well, I hope. Um, he'll recover, but he did leave us with a few agenda items, so I suppose we can start with the first one. Um, as some of you may have seen, there is a post in a marketing guild channel that we are looking for a new. Marketing Guild Lead, oh, it's town hall number ninety-eight, thank you, Tevo. We are looking for a new marketing guild lead and some of you have already said they are. Um, interested and some of you have sent me a DM saying that they're interested, so we have about. Around ten people already interested and I only posted it about three hours ago or two hours ago. Um, just gonna quickly repeat some of the. Uh, what the role would entail if any one of you would be interested in becoming the new marketing guild lead. Um, some of the tasks that would be. Part of the role is uh creating the quarterly budget for the marketing guilds, coming up with. The marketing guild's areas of focus and outcomes for each quarter. Um, presenting the guild's end of the month's update at Ambassador Town Hall. Um, and yeah. Uh, encouraging the marketing task force members to submit ideas for community engagement and. Help reviewing community engagement initiatives and a whole bunch of more, I left a. Fairly long list in the marketing guild channel, so you can check it out if you're interested, and I think. This is the first time that we are in a position where we have to appoint or vote for a marketing guild lead. So I think we would have to have a discussion on how we wanna go about doing that, since this is the first time. And usually guild leads just put their hands up and say, hey, I wanna. Create a new guild and then usually that person is the ma- uh the guild lead and. This time it's different, we have ten and probably more people in the next few days that will be interested in this roles, so. Um, how do you think we should go about selecting the new marketing guild lead? Should they be required to send in some kind of. Resume or a description about themselves, so their background, or would you be open to just appointing? Anyone, um, maybe even without a marketing background? Cause I'm not sure if everybody that has put up their hand right now has a marketing background, to be honest, I don't think so, so would you consider? Um, I guess voting for someone that doesn't have a marketing. Uh, background, or should that be a requirement, and also how should we go about the devote? And yeah, there, I guess there's lots of things to figure out and I I'm definitely not the one appointing. Uh, the role by myself, so this will be a community decision. Um, William, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Sorry about that, um. Yeah, I I'm going to say that yes, having an experience in the marketing field is gonna be beneficial to whoever's uh taking over the role. Um, I don't know, uh, was this something i- in your foray before, uh Judith?
Sorry, it was something what?
Something that you were part of before, the Marketing Guild?
Yes, yes, uh, I took over the Marketing Guild after someone had unexpectedly left in. Uh, past October and I said I can, uh. Take the lead for a while, I volunteered to do it for a while, but I also knew that I wouldn't be able to do it. Uh, longer than the end of, until the end of spring, so that is around now, um, so here we are.
Um, so, uh, I I guess, would you be offering to uh help my door and and bring whoever is going to take the lead role up to speed?
Yeah, absolutely, um, I'm always there for questions, obviously, and there will absolutely be an. Onboarding call where I'll be updating the person on what we've been doing recently and what the focus is currently. Um, and what's been happening for the the past weeks, so definitely. In terms of training, I don't think there's a lot of training required, cause we do not have strict. Well, rules and guidelines, the guild lead is basically very free to determine. With the group where they wanna take the guild and how they wanna run it, so there's no. No very strict set of rules, to be honest, so in terms of training, that will be fairly easy.
Yeah, uh, so, what I was gonna say though is, uh, it's just important that there's continuity. From the past to the present to the future, and with you being that go-between in-between. It would definitely help whoever's coming along and I'm quite sure they would appreciate that. As for me, I'm just looking forward to whoever's doing it, take the uh responsibility on. And I hope the people that are interested in the position are also willing to help whoever is selected for the job. Because they're going to need help, thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely, and uh, as I quickly mentioned in the channel, no one is supposed to do it by themselves. Uh, you always have to co- support uh the people in the group and also if you ever, the person that takes on the role, if they ever feel like. It is too much responsibility or it's too many hours, like you're always welcome to. Step back, there's no, no one expects you to turn around the marketing guild in three. Months or hit some crazy numbers or, I mean, it's really. You you can do it at your own pace and at your own capacity, it's not that. Um, we will throw you into this role and then we expect impossible things of you. So if the person that takes on the role takes two, four, six weeks to even get used to how things are working, that's totally fine. I would say at least. Um, I think the main question that we need to uh come to terms with is how do we wanna appoint? The person and should there be any requirements, like do you need anything? Do you wanna see any type of requirements established around electing the new Marketing Guild Lead? Or should it just be anyone who put their hand up?
Indeed, funding, they did the provide an incentive amount. And then call people up to the role, I feel like it's a sim- similar situation.
Sorry, provide, provide what?
Uh, incentive, like the AJX, for example, Supervisory Council, they have a budget, very specific budget already. In this kind of example you're proposing, it's more like you elect the person and they elect the person decides the budget.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, and yeah, in in this sense, I feel like it perhaps is much easier if uh. Budget is provided beforehand and it it can be like flexible, uh in a sense like questioning the person itself. If you had two thousand dollars per month, where would you spend your time? And this is the list of things, management, encouraging task force, pompous for others. I will be doing these specific things, this is the reward of taking part of and like. The way they are presenting the budget allocation and yeah, we can also increase it and let's say, okay, now. Let's say it's ten thousand dollars, how would you then do that? And now they can start like, we should, we can start visualizing the strategy basically based on their allocation of rewards. They imagine they will do to incentivize marketing.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Well, William, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, so. The only thing I would also say that yeah, marketing is is a very intrinsic part of this whole endeavor. Um, it's gonna, it's going to be helping all the different groups. And growing their potential, so having somebody with the uh, the background skills and knowledge in the field. Would definitely be an asset, I like the idea of the uh questions that you were talking about, Tivo, I think they're relevant to that as well. But, yeah, skill set, uh, a decent skill set already established. In some form of marketing would definitely be a benefit to the group.
And how would you say they would have to present that skill set to us? Like, should that be in form of a resume or a quick? Uh, like, yeah, I guess a quick resume of what they've been doing, or like, should that be? Education-based, like I have a degree in marketing, or should it be experience-based, or should it? What what do you think would be suitable?
No, you you you'd like to ask the easy questions, eh Judith? So, um, I'm not a big fan of having somebody fill out a form. Uh, looking at a resume is something different, but, um. Maybe, I don't know if this would be putting anything on the core contributors. But maybe the core contributors could have a look at whatever, uh, the individuals want to present. Uh, as their, their background or tools to uh lead the guild. And then go from there, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure myself, I haven't. I don't have a preferred answer, sorry, sorry Judith.
No, no worries at all, I'm just, um, this is, we're just here to gather ideas. So any, any input is fine, um, I think Kenichi, you were next?
Um, yeah, sure, um, hi Judith, uh, so, um. The idea I had honestly was that we should move forward with a proposal style, but the proposal style would be quite unique in a way that. We, um, we actually need to like, um, start with. KPIs and actionable deliverables, maybe it can like, uh, Tivo suggested it can be a specific amount of in the budget that, okay. You have five thousand to ten thousand dollars, what is your proposal for the marketing guild as the lead? What exactly would you be open to achieve, what would you be hoping to do and how do you intend to do that? And what would your roadmap look like and the timeline to achieve these goals? And when we can expect to, you know, get like a report back, so and then of course, let's say, this proposal is done. Um, anonymously, basically, so every proposal is just the proposal itself, maybe it's proposal ID one, ID two, ID three. We don't know what the proposal is, we don't know where, anything about the proposal, we just see a viable marketing proposal that can help. Scale the work groups and the ambassador program itself, and also maybe with conjunctions to foundations and other projects. But ideally, it should be a proposal based in that format, and then the forty-one core contributors can go ahead to wherever, maybe a specific platform we have for that. And they can vote or select the proposal, probably with comments and ideations along the way, or how to improve such proposal of leave comments. And the person that is, that has the proposal, uh, anonymously of course, would reply back to such proposals. And yeah, such comments and answer them to remove any complexity out of it, if you can facilitate such a thing. So where the marketing proposal itself is the goal, and then when the proposal that we accept, the number one proposal that we accept, we do. Where we are, we believe in the most, the lead of that project, we go ahead and select the most actionable like. Team members that would help that person achieve such goals or that team has achieved such goals in the long run, so I think that's. And then maybe along the way that, after having the core team, that maybe like the strategist, uh, somebody with um. Hands-on experience with actual marketing and all, and a few other items that the project would need as that proposal would need, then they can also start. Bringing in more contributors into it to assist along the way with tasks that, you know, of course, that style, and if there's a need of a budget increase along the way. All we'll have to do is look back on their KPIs and deliverables, and as long as they pull through, I feel the person deserves or the team deserves another shot at. Running another proposal and we can just do it like that, so that's my idea.
Interesting, that's quite specific, so wait, but, um. So how would everybody vote on a proposal based on what criteria? Just a, just a simple, like rated from one to ten, or? I like it and I dislike it, or it needs to be specific criteria, or?
Oh, sorry, sorry to cut to this, so the the idea would be the the proposals will have a whole. Time span, maybe like a month or something, or like three weeks for the whole commenting and ideation for people to figure out. What they like and don't like about it, flesh it all out, and as long as there's. And there's that period and we've all understood everything, then there will not be a vote for the core contributors to decide, I think the old point of where. We are doing the comments and reviewing what we don't like or like about it, it can be open to the entire community regardless of. The core contributor role or not, but the core contributor will be the deciding factor to vote on after getting all the clarity from the committee, what the committee likes about it, doesn't like about it. Since the marketing proposal and the marketing guild itself, it's for the ambassador program community and it's a good community, so I. Believe the entire community should have a whole chat about it first, and then after the, let's say, one month or three weeks period of. Ideating on it and commenting on these proposals, then we cannot have the action move by invite our votes in itself. And we can decide on which proposal we are going forward with.
Okay, well, that's a quite long process, over a month. Um, yeah, but I I do like the idea, um, Walter, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you Judith, so let's kinda roll the tape back a bit. So the person who kinda started the thing back fourteen months ago, just. Just didn't wanna do it anymore, so indeed, it 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 wasn't Libo for a while, right, and then you picked it up. So in a sense, this preponderance of people who wanna something is a new phenomenon. At which point I have to question, okay, so what exactly did the change, is it that suddenly? There is a perception that this is an easy job that pays well, or what's up? Right, to me, this is kinda simple, the people who are qualified are people who are doing it now. Uh, if, uh, you know, uh, you you hold the meetings, you know, the participants. There aren't ten people showing up and contributing now, so if there are ten people saying, oh, they wanna lead it. Well, sorry, uh, if there is three or four people who are presently doing the work, we best, uh. Uh, select among those, right, it's like, it's not like we need to. Get us a new boss who didn't choose to get involved up till now. They don't really wanna do the work, they just wanna be the boss, right, that's not what you want. Uh, next point is we don't pay people for roles, uh, we've eliminated paying. For an ambassador role over six months ago, we uh compensate people for work. For actual meaningful contribution, so as such, uh, there is no payment associated. Was the role, uh, next point is we don't actually have a singular requirement for a lead. Uh, we, it would be beneficial to have people who made a commitment for con- consistent participation. And doing things that keep the organization going, but it's actually better to have several. We already know how disruptive it is when the likes of Tommy or Fly or somebody. Shift gears quickly and then, you know, a unit starts wavering. And some of them uh end up kinda like, okay, limp, whatever. So instead of saying we need a lead, I'd say, uh, the unit could, uh. Stand to have a membership, you know, some kind of a leadership team. So many, plenty of organizations have co-leads, I actually find it to be. Useful in the number nonprofits I worked with, so, you know. And also dividing responsibilities that this person's in charge of, uh, making, you know. Weekly meetings, this other person's in charge of this other thing, so that there is the core. Leadership taking care of all the aspects and that's the how you do, and so in terms of qualifications, you. Judge people by their deeds, right, what have they done for the marketing guild already? What have they delivered, then Judith, you are uniquely qualified, so are the rest of your handful of participants. And then all the media work groups under the umbrella of marketing, their leads. Should probably be invited, yeah, like Kenichi who spoke just now, uh, should be invited to have. You know, a a role within the leadership team, um, of the overall marketing. Uh, department, right, so so to me, we shouldn't demand. Uh, the commercial, marketing, education and experience. Uh, instead again, judge people by the results of being able to do outreach. Uh, generate or oversee generating content that gets engagement. You know, getting, growing the organization, getting new people in, getting existing people. Trained up and, you know, being more capable and so on, so so again, it's not like, uh. You know, we're not gonna just grab somebody who just showed up, right, and put him in charge of the entire outreach. Of the whole organization, so if they've been around three, six months, okay, what have you done so far? So so to me, this doesn't have to be typically getting leadership, uh, position filled in a nonprofit. Is a difficult job because nobody wants to do the work, right? So maybe of the, the most important thing for the selection, but okay. What have you done for us already, for the ambassadors, for marketing, have you even been showing up yourself? And then you'll discover that there is maybe two and a half people that are still even in the conversation. So that's like, and and so it's their commitment in many ways and, you know, demonstrated commitment. Uh, and availability in a nonprofit are more, at times more important than. Uh, you know, any kind of resume, so that's kind of, you know. My perception, thank you Judith, and yes, yes, we assume it's not cause you're leaving in any way. But because you just have too much other stuff on your plate related to the ecosystem, so assume. You know, you'll support and train whoever comes online.
I definitely will support and train whoever comes next. Um, regarding the leadership team you're referring to, would there be a cap? Like, uh, cap in terms of numbers or or? I'm I'm not quite sure.
Typically allow the guilds to self-regulate as to how they. Uh, organize and and compensate, so I don't think this is any different. There is already a budget for Q two in place, right, so the overall guild budget's already set. You know, there's more than uh anybody else, cause you've composed it, kinda sort of. And so in other words, um, like R and D Guild, we don't have a strict singular. This is the one person in charge, uh, and so on, it, um, if the guild. Wants to declare that there are three people, lead and co-lead and assistant, whatever, or. You know, there is a cabinet or however, however you folks wanna do it, you're entirely at liberty to do it, don't feel like. We have to hand you down a uh, a roadmap, just do the right thing, just think of. The organization and it will all become, you know, immediately obvious. What would it take for consistent growth of the outreach and content generation for ambassadors? Who's already doing all the heavy lifting, how can we support them too? And then along the way, they also get called the lead and the co-lead and whatever.
Okay, so now we don't only have the challenge of selecting someone new, we also have the challenge of selecting the process. Of how to select someone new, let's see, so in the chat we have Rob says resume and cover letter. Uh, Terra says, I would say no CV, um, just let them describe their skills if they want. But main element we want is the proposal, um, although Cordy says, I love what Kenichi proposed. Uh, Rob says that is sure a lot of human resources are, um. Uh, tests like that are certainly awesome, I've seen IQ, EQ and such tests for executive. Level test. Um, God, Georgia says to know one's experience in leading the marketing guild, the CV and resume are required. And after the selection, a quick interview can be conducted to know how the marketing guild leader plans to improve the SNET ecosystem. So there's lots of different, lots of different opinions here, um, William, go ahead.
Thank you, um, now. What I plan on doing within the Strategy Guild is making sure that everybody shares the lead. So that once we're up and running and everybody is confident in what they're doing. That the, that the actual lead will rotate through the meetings. So that everybody understands the responsibility to the group, of the group, and as that lead is changing. They will be informed by the previous meeting, previous minutes of where we are, so the continuity remains the same as well. This way, there's not one person given the lead and given the responsibility. And and then the responsibility of making decisions on other people's behabes. This it becomes much more of a community event within each guild, so that's the way I'm going with the Strategy Guild. How other people approach it, that'll be up to them.
Mm-hmm, the one thing is that the Marketing Guild Lead will have, uh, some sort of. Um, relationship with the foundation and will be the liaison for communication between the Marketing Guild and the foundation. So to switch it up, um, a lot, uh, would be, I think, difficult. At at least there should be someone who maintains the, uh, there should be a, an appointed person that. Handles the relationship with the foundation so that there's not a lot of information lost every time.
Okay, I absolutely understand that, thank you Judith.
Um, all right, do we have any other opinions on it? How about? Um, new people that haven't, have not been contributing yet? Is that a hard no? Cause technically every time we selected a new, well, we didn't select it, but every time someone put their hand up to. Run a new guild, I mean, they didn't necessarily have a lot of experience before. Um, I think neither that they ever have to show their skills or resume as far as I'm concerned, so. Does anyone here think it would be unfair to all of a sudden ask? Uh, the new Marketing Guild Lead for all of these requirements? Or are we all agreeing that requirements should be in place?
I think the role should go to the person that has the most kind of experience and passion, but. Experience is important.
Within the ecosystem or just experience, cause it's, someone can have a lot of experience, but they're maybe new to the ecosystem. But they may be a great marketing leader.
Hmm, I think, I think having experience within the ecosystem will make them more successful. And, uh, I think they have an opportunity now and on an ongoing basis to continue to participate in Singularity Net Ambassador. Uh, events and become more knowledgeable as time progresses, and then maybe in the future they can become a lead or co-lead or, you know, participate in that role, but. I think having a, an existing knowledge of the culture and history of Singularity Net through participation. Is gonna be beneficial to them in their role.
Okay, O E P says, yes, requirements should be in place. Sugar, Sugar and Spice says, I think first requirement would be being a core contributor in the program.
Actually, it's cool point what Sir Ken said. In order for marketing lead to be around, it's not that hard in in a sense that you you join a few sessions and you try to help somebody. And that's how you get to be a recognized part of the algorithm. If you don't contribute, but you participate a lot, then people will nominate you. So you can still buy assets. Um so maybe that could be a thing that you put up. And another thing is this session itself, it kind of shows an expectation and a vision of a future marketing point. So whereas leading, even if like what Vaca said, that have a leadership team might be a bit hard to initially come up with if you haven't never personally made a team or put this thing together, but you have the passion that I would like to try to lead the team or figure out how to distribute marketing. And then, yeah, like William said, if they have the passion, maybe we still find that person to be in that role. But he also has that call that, okay, in six or one year, this, I will try to decentralize that role more often, like to make it not to be a one leader thing, but be a team leading thing.
Mm hmm. And for full transparency, when I took over, um the Marketing Guild uh not took over the Marketing Guild, but when I was when I volunteered to lead it, I no one asked me for any credential, neither a resume nor if I have lots of experience. I think at some point I had introduced myself in the disc court and had mentioned that I do have marketing experience, but I don't think any anybody required anything of me. Um I think, yeah, I was just part part of the community for by that time, six months. Um but other than that, no nothing was required, just for full transparency. Um Duke? You have your hand up?
Yeah, hello everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so um um I think I I I would like to propose a methodology that embraces um quite a little bit of what I have almost heard everyone say, because I had to jump out of the meeting at some point. But then, um so firstly, I, marketing, I like to, I like to look at marketing like um any other, any other professional field, call it medicine and surgery or engineering, for example. It's a very delicate um um field that you cannot propagate with passion, right? Um it's just like saying you, like you just, you just cannot propagate some things with passion alone. There are some, there are some guilds or work groups that we can decide to experiment and just let anyone jump on who is just passionate, you know. Um but I ma- marketing is quite delicate and it's something that you need really skilled hands who understand the rudiments of, you know, marketing, you know, selling, persuasion. You know, quite a number of things are all all come together. So now, we may have done it differently before now. And um you did a fantastic job in leading the guild. I commend you for that. But I wouldn't like to say that simply because it was done a particular way. You know, it should be kept running that particular way, you know, especially when we have, excuse me, especially when we have um K P I's or we have um a vision board with a list of elements that we are looking to achieve within a particular, you know, um time spectrum. We want to look at the area of people who are presenting themselves, sort of like what happened with centralization blueprint, right? It's a specific and it's a specific task that require a specific set of skills to be able to execute. You know, you don't put that out and just while you you can open applications to everybody, but there has to be a team of people who evaluates, you know, you know, the rudiments of everyone's um qualification and all of that. So I joined the meeting somewhere, I I hoped that I'll be meeting a bit, joined in somewhere between um where I heard Kennedy speaking and um he made some excellent points. I think the only thing I probably, from where I heard, I I didn't hear from the beginning, from from where I heard. Um the only thing I I I may not buy in was to be the timeframe. I heard something about a one month or something timeframe, that that seems like a pretty long time. But we should have a set of protocols set in place for bringing on board a new person. I wouldn't advocate for it just being um um someone who's passionate or someone who's available. You can have someone who just joined the guild who's really good and, you know, has his onions in this thing and probably has more hands-on experience than some other person on this. Because it's a skilled rule, right? That's that's the caveat on this for me, because it's a skilled rule, right? We should have someone who has some pedigree, you know, or at least can prove, you know, um um to have some pedigree in marketing communications. Um um even if it's just something as simple as copyrighting or social media management or something, but it has to be something that links you back to marketing in a way, you know, then we can now say, okay. Um the team, let's say we have maybe like a review circle, permit me to use the word in this context. You know, we have a team of people who will go through this um um applications, I like to call them that. You know, and then from there, pick out the fine set of people, subject them to a second round of um testing, whatever that means, or whatever that represents, you know, and then maybe a final one where just whatever, but then I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we should, you know, throw it in the open and just let it be a product of passion and all that. Let's let's have some standardized process for, you know, having certain rules. And this is not just about the marketing now, because this can happen in any other guild that is a skilled guild, you know. And then there has to be a transfer of leadership from one person to the other, you know. Um if there is nothing already in, um I I'm not sure any any guild particularly has a bylaw. You know, but then if there's nothing stipulated already for the trans for transitioning um leadership, for transition of leadership, then if it's a skilled rule, it has to be stipulated to, or it has to be subjected to a stipulated set of um protocols or procedures for transitioning. You know, that's just my thoughts.
Judith, did we lose you? I see somebody else has their hand up. I'm sorry?
It's a Williams.
Okay, if you'd like to go ahead, I say, Peter, your hand's still up. Just let you know. Sorry, Duke. Thank you.
Okay, I I think.
Say, if you'd like to go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, that kicked me out for a second on my phone, so I have to rejoin.
Yeah, the network broke me out too. I don't know if everyone was, if you heard me till the end or um if it stopped somewhere.
Yeah, no, uh no, we got you right through to the end and then
Okay, okay, okay.
Uh Judith disappeared for a second, so that's why I stepped in to take over so that I say could say her words. So I'm gonna step back. You're back on the lead.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure at which point I cut out, to be honest. I think the last thing I was asking is if we have any kind of set of rules around electing a girl leader or transferring leadership. And if anybody knows if if we do have anything, I'm not aware of it, but if we do, please let me know.
So I'm not sure we do. I'm not sure we do, but I'm advocating that for some specific um guilds, not every one of them, you know, um for some specific guilds, you know. Um uh for example, let me, let me, let me use, um um what example can I use now? Um maybe like the video work group or the writers' um work group, right? They do fantastic and phenomenal work, you know, over at their end, you know, and then we're having someone else come on board. You know, there has to be, I would advocate or I would suggest that there be an eligibility process that tests these persons um um capacity, you know, to write, for example. You know, or the translation work deal, for example, we want to know if um the person who is leading the guild, you know, is um efficient when it has to do with translation responsibilities. So these are, in my opinion, skilled positions, right? And you want to have people leave them not on the strength of passion, right? Because, I mean, the the passion is quite fickle, right? You may not be passionate tomorrow, right? You may be faced with a very complex circumstance that you need to wiggle your way out of in minutes or in about an hour or so. You have the requisite skill, you know, to be able to do that, right? So I'm I'm saying that some, some, I I don't think we we do have that right now, but I'm advocating that we should have that for some um um for some guilds. And the marketing leading the initiative would be very brilliant.
Judith, are you there or are you frozen?
Sorry, I was um who should be, who should be writing the book? Should that be the current guild leader or should that be a group document? Who should, who should determine those roles?
Uh if I imagine that something should be set up so that you have some sort of a document that's uh going to be able to be changed to reflect the needs of any given position. So that would probably be best done in here uh as the ambassador corps is it 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 is the go-between between the foundation and the community, correct?
It is what?
It is the connection between the foundation and the community, the Ambassador Guild itself. So that's why I'm saying, so maybe it's a project for the group itself to set something like that up. Sorry, I say, uh we we just got tied up.
All right. Um Essie, you have your hand up. Uh sorry, I'm not sure if that's just me, but you're really, really quiet.
Very quiet.
Okay, i- i- is it, is it better now?
Tiny but better, yes.
Okay, so in my opinion, um looking at the responsibility, um is it possible that uh the this role is not just one, but it is kind of like broken down into chunks for effectiveness purposes? Because um marketed, so um the lead might just be in charge of overseeing all of these things. But when it comes to uh stuffs like proposal, reviews, partnership with the foundation, in my opinion, I think that's like another thing entirely. And it it should kind of have like, like a sub lead or something as a charge of that. Uh because it's going to really help with much more effectiveness, in my opinion. Uh because um coming up with marketing initiatives and guides and then trying to um check up, trying to go back and forth with the foundation and trying to do all of these things. It it sounds like a whole lot, no matter how, because I've been doing marketing for a while and I know how, you know, marketing can be, because the few marketers like head of marketers are like superpower, they have superpowers and stuff. But the truth is, for you, for for you to be effective in carrying out all of these things, I think the leader might just be like an overseer, maybe someone that uh maybe come up with a quarterly budget and look down, then we can have like maybe sub marketing guild lead, uh maybe like two, to help with the effectiveness of all of this. And yeah, according to what everyone has said, you know, before now, I think there's no like a lead down rule for um for who to take the lead. Hmm. So maybe the lead lead has to have like, you know, some experience with marketing and all of that. And maybe the other sub-leads uh might maybe like, they might be interested in marketing or have uh marketing ideas or they have like passion for the, because there's only for you to have passion for growth for the similarity net. And there's another thing for you to have like a marketing um uh knowledge, right? So that you can be able to come up with um, you know, uh initiatives that would really help because um someone that might not be coming from the marketing angle, might have some ideas. But if someone that's coming from marketing area looks at it, um they might find the loopholes and the uncertainties and all of that, right? So I think it should just be like a blended mix, maybe. Um the core leader has to have like marketing experience and sub-leaders might not necessarily have like in-depth, in-depth marketing knowledge, but overall, I think someone that would take up the lead should be um someone that has been in the ecosystem for a while. Not too long, but also like the person's passion and everything is visible, right? So um it seems that they are not just here for the title, but they are here to actually, you know, uh support and stuff. So yeah, that's my own take.
Yeah, definitely, definitely agree. Um we have Gia Mo, I think you were next, and we only have five minutes left. I feel like we've done a horrible job at going through Peter's items. We're still at item number one, so um Gia Mo, go for it.
Hey, guys. Sorry, I I joined late. Um so, yeah, first of all, experience, I'm gonna just follow uh intuitively the the flow of the conversation. Um I was reading on the chat, uh so experience, yes, not all, not everything is carried with passion, definitely. Uh knowledge in operations of operations is up to date. So we find that in summaries. That's a powerful tool we have as ambassador. Everything is summarized uh uh in regards of uh every every weekly meeting and that way we can, we can prove uh assistance and if someone would have the chance to lead should be the people that have been following uh your lead and are are not to date of the task needed. Uh in regards of um budget, today we consent in governance on on a budget increase uh without knowing this uh change of gears or change of leadership. And there were some concerns presented, even though the budget was approved. Uh and yeah, I agree with a bunch of the participant that contribute in this discussion. Uh long contributors, not not only core contributors, because it's something that have changed substantially. Uh but long contributor in the ecosystem knows about the ecosystem and they can carry the message with more powerful uh knowledge. Um so yeah, but I'm 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 wondering what's, what, why, and what's behind this. Uh but I'm sure it's the right call. Um but yeah, so uh definitely a consensus and
Wondering what's behind the change in leadership?
Yeah, but that's something that I I because I missed the the introduction, but I totally uh yeah, agree the decision probably best for the ecosystem and for you and for, you're probably gonna take more responsibilities somewhere else, but we're gonna miss you in that behalf. And I saw a great leadership in you, uh Judy, on this, because the the great stuff that you guys put together in only two months, uh I I consent today budget with full, full agreement, because I've seen a great stuff done. So uh uh yeah, that's it on my side. Uh, yeah, that's it on my side.
Well, thank you. Um, regarding the comment on, we should just check the meeting notes. Well, the marketing guild has not been meeting based for several weeks now, because our main focus was establishing the. Uh, the partnership with the foundation, which was a lot of um conversations and delicate calls around. How we um can set this up, what is feasible, what is not feasible, um. Um, it was this kind of a slow process, because there was lots of things to. Consider, so and and those calls weren't calls with twenty people or ten people. Like we did, it was a lot of um. Calls with uh Peter, the foundation marketing lead and myself, just to to for now ask a lot of questions around. What they're open to do, what is a yes for them, what is an absolute no for them? And it was a lot of just figuring out how we can go about getting this partnership going. Um, so there wasn't a lot of group meetings in the past few weeks. So that's why it's a bit difficult to go back through the meeting notes in this case.
Okay, but still, uh, even though the procedure of a summer, the output is substantially amazing. So that that's what we need to stick with. Uh, I I have been following uh the chat. And the initiatives are are great stuff, so uh that's that what the team should follow. Initiatives and what is already moving on the table and therefore there's a lot of great marketers in this community, so. It was for that and.
Yeah.
For once, we start a pop on it, you should be allowed to play.
Uh, Clement, you have your hands up.
Hello, Judith, can you hear me?
Yes, can you find?
Yeah, hi, everyone. First of all, uh, Judith, you didn't pronounce my name as Clement today for the very first time. Yeah, it's 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 sounding quite different though.
I was literally about to say Mont, and then I was like Clement.
Yeah, so so I I want to start with, um, well, I'm kind of gonna miss you. Uh, as being a marketing guild lead, but well, I'd like to stand on Ace's stance. That um passion is not sufficient, more more like what you said, that we need specific requirements. Because for me, it's it's a very delicate uh role you you'd be leaving for someone else to come fill. And then I I kind of buy into Kenich's uh approach towards, you know, selecting the new guild lead, only that we need to. Find a way to make that shorter. Now, I'm also concerned that maybe during this transition process, uh could there be? Room for laxity in the marketing guild's ability to meet up with their seed targets or KPIs, whatever it is. I'm concerned, I don't know if um that's something we should look into, but then I'll suggest that, well. Uh, a new person is is set up, we can have some sort of a transition council set up, maybe. Uh, that could compose of members from the core contributor or from the existing leadership structure of the marketing guild, right? So they could play a role in ensuring that, you know, uh these key roles that maybe you'd be leaving. Are still, you know, executed while, you know, the transition process goes on smoothly. And then they could also, you know, join hands with you to uh help um kind of guide whoever succeeds to. Come on board and ensure that responsibilities are, you know, effectively uh executed, so. That's just my contribution in this regard.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm just wondering how we're gonna go about selecting the actual process. Now, because there are so many ideas and I don't even know, yeah, I don't, I don't even know how we're gonna do this, um. Trevor says crazy, what, live boarding for one minute to select a lead? Nice one. I mean, we could.
Sorry, Judith, so I I I want to also say, maybe this this council could um be in charge of collating ideas. Know the ones with, you know, the hints we provided today, and then maybe they could meet and, you know, have a brainstorm around it. You know, and then bring it back to the community, because I know why it's seeming as if most of these ideas are. Uh, some of them are outstanding implementables, because they are yet to be refined, right? So I believe if people brainstorm around this, there could be some more refinement and then maybe persons can, you know, decide to vote, okay? This is where we have to go and then it's easy um to take decision on one, you know, particular approach, so.
Okay, um Vanessa, you're saying one thought, guilds and work groups are meant to be independent. Um, so maybe those who decide should be those who are part of the guild, not all of us. Um, so the marketing guild itself does not have a tag, because we never had a requirement. Like in the writers or in the video workgroup where they have to do this introductory task and this initial task in order to be part of the. Guild. Marketing Guild was always open to anyone who felt they wanted to contribute. The only tag we currently have is the Marketing Task Force, which was the people that said they're interested in a community engagement initiatives. Specifically, but that's not marketing guild, that's just a part of marketing guild. Um, so there's a lot of people that came in and out and there's a lot of people that have contributed. Um, but since we didn't do regular meetings, there's also no one that contributed like regularly. Because there there was just a lot of people coming in and out, so it's a bit challenging. To even determine who's actually part of the marketing guild, because technically it is really open to all. And there's been a lot of people that have been contributing. And maybe for the next guild leader, one thing they wanna do is to actually. Create a marketing guild tag and put some rules in place on who can be part of it and who cannot. But so far, it's been completely open. Um, Clement, you still have your hand up or you have your hand up again? I'm not sure.
Sorry, sorry, I I I took it down, sorry.
Alright, Colly says, quick interview.
I can share something.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
I wrote the almost broken poverty, but maybe I'll be made for last year. And if I filter out by this year, I'm marketing guild basically only has recognized. About six people, so it, that was a question like, who are these people or who's? I actually don't even know who are, um, like what these two are doing mainly, now I see. Then we have our typical contenders who are roaming and other and contribute to different workgroups. And Judith dealing.
I don't know, I feel like the contribution based thing is a bit unfair, because it wasn't, there just wasn't regular meetings for people to even.
Yeah, that's why, for example, I look at.
That many parts, because we were really focused on a bunch of. Strategy for a while that had nothing to do with tasks, really, but yeah. So not sure about that, but thank you for sharing.
This is also another way that, how do you recognize uh contributions? Like right now, you you would like to see who was, who were the people who helped to to contribute. Either commenting to document or joining to a particular feedback session or providing feedback in the feedback forum. So actually, all of these actions, we are capable of recording them. If they just need to be brought up in like treasury code, hey, here is an input, we recognize people. And only need think that to be honest is uh that are the people willing to be recognized this way. And, yeah, because I do also like the fact that, why are we always trying to look from leaders? And people from outside the network, when we could also just look at the data sometimes. And see who has contributed and ask them, would you like to step up your game a little and lead? Maybe some people are not even willing to put themselves up, and because they they feel like there are so many talented people around them. Like, and and whoever is pointing themselves in, they're not gonna compete, because they just, they they already like this place and they don't. They're not sure are they ready for it, but if you, like, for example, the same way we did for core contributors. Like, you all are core contributors, your decision is gonna matter, everybody has the power to plot the proposal, and now we are dealing with. Constant new proposals, but that's that's like the power of practice and and people. Maybe previously, if you would have asked who wants to be core contributor, who wants to make a decision on these proposals. We probably would have much less people in the list, where right now we are. Providing them that, hey, you have proven that you're capable of taking this accountability.
And what about contributions that were made outside of the marketing guild? Like, what if someone hasn't been part of the marketing guild, but they've been just contributing. Very tremendously to the ambassador program in general and have proven that they are reliable and they have good ideas and they're. They can communicate well, what about those people?
But if nobody recognizes them, then it's, you don't, like, that's the point, like, if there is that person. And it is not recognized and you know them, then that that would be the part of the lead or the person who knows how this. System works to to point that out and say, would you be like to be recognized for whatever contribution? That you just mentioned was on.
Alright, well, um, Walter says, instead of assigning a singular lead, assemble a team of three to six interested and committed. Individuals and within themselves, they will divide the task and responsibilities. Um, yeah, it could work, it could also end in chaos, who knows? Would be worth trying. Um, William, you have your hand up.
Uh, take my hand down, and the only thing I wanted to say was that. Just because somebody has been sitting in the background within this community. Uh, longer than anybody else, doesn't mean they're more qualified for the position. Because it's it's happened through attrition, more qualified people might have jumped ship, because they weren't getting any any engagement. So the process really should be an open one at this time, and then I think that uh. How it's put together, though, that really comes up to this crew, so it's it's a responsibility they have to take up here.
Okay. Um. I'm a bit. Not so sure where to go from here. So many, um, so many good ideas, very feasible ideas. Um, I'm quickly gonna check.
Can I, can I uh just suggest that, I mean, because we see so much engagement. This isn't, I I don't think the position demands somebody be in it today. That we we let the people who want to present themselves for it within the. Uh, guild itself, present within the guild itself, so that during the next week, we can review what they've put in there. And then that way it'll help us make, come to a better decision next week, and if that process doesn't work. Then we look at something else that might work, but at least that gives us a beginning to to work from.
Yes, does anybody have an objection to that? We'll definitely not make a decision on this call, I feel like. Um, alright, we're twelve minutes past the hour. Should we shut it off or should we keep going with Peter's other three items?
Uh, Walter's got his hand up.
Walter?
A quick announcement, uh so there is a spreadsheet where we're adding. Uh, the proposals to deep funding round four, so we can like uh read each other's ideas. And uh support and help and maybe even like vote along those lines. So the announcement was the links is in the ambassador group chat channel there.
So, Walter, sorry, what, I I did reach out to you, Walter, I don't know if you got my message in Discord in regards to that.
Hmm, I'm sorry, I didn't see who was speaking, but yes, I got some messages. And uh reach out more if you haven't heard, but yeah, I've seen two messages so far, thank you.
Alright, alright, thank you.
I would also add one quick reminder, which didn't show today, but uh I, on the process queue channel, I also put it in Zoom chat. I drafted the ambassador program sentiment analysis report, so the thing we did last week. Now the pictures are on one document, some insights are written there. Somebody wants to add more text or something, then you're welcome, um, let me know. Also, how much time we take, if you're really looking into analysis and providing something. More than just to uh changes there. Um, so yeah, that was pretty good experiment, thanks for joining the last time. Um, so probably next year again, because this 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 questionnaire, it seemed to be working.
By the way, Peter's other items were, um, do we need a dedicated social media workgroup? Are we open enough to new joiners and deep funding approach to cross circle? Cross workgroups in our case, task forces, can we use it? Um.
Yeah, I think it might as fifteen minutes, I think it don't need to take another agenda item.
Yeah, all all of, all of these are huge topics, I feel I feel like we will not be able to cover any of those, unfortunately. Um, we, yeah, we barely, yeah, I mean, we did make some process on this first item. Um. Yeah, I'll definitely have to re-listen to this town hall to take notes um of all the items and see if we should. If it would make sense to vote on a process. Of selecting this new member, like, should we vote on that process first or should someone just write those rules? Um. At this point, all I can do is message in the Discord chat and.
Yeah, I think this would be quite nice, actually, this is like, oh, the overall sentiment of different processes that was suggested. As like, we have six options to choose from and everybody, like a Discord voting, you have these actions. And you put the action when you agree with any model and then you can choose multiple actions, which means multiple solutions. And then maybe we have a consensus on some processes that have more majority, I guess. And then on like top three and based on this top three, we have like pros and cons and I don't know, final.
I believe this would be a good time to try out this new decision software that we've tested over the past. Weeks, so.
We only have two days left.
Wait, what?
We have only two days left.
Not the one from last week?
Yeah.
And you, uh, which one are you talking about, Lumio?
No, nope, so then we have more tools, let's try more tools then.
Yeah, that, I'll let, let me double check, I'm I'm pretty sure we were. At a point where we can use this decision making software that we've been testing and deep funding as well. But I'm not sure, I have to, I have to double check, but either way, a decision making software would be uh great right now, so. Um, yeah, yeah, I'll I'll re-listen and take out the, take down the main points. And then I suppose let's vote on the process and then after that we'll vote on the person. If, I guess, if the vote is something that we wanna do, or maybe we wanna do the. One minute and we'll decide on someone. Who had to tell what to suggest.
Yeah, we put it, put every, put everybody's name on a set of dice and then throw the dice.
Experience person and see if they can pull it off.
Yeah, no, um what I was gonna say Judith, in the minutes of the meeting afterwards, the three items that you uh said that we we really do have to deal with on the next meeting. If they're there, uh so outstanding agenda items, then that would give some of us a chance to have a look at them for ourselves. So we're uh more prepared for next week's meeting to help deal with them.
Sorry, which agenda items are you referring to?
The the three outstanding ones we have from today.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the one said Peter posted that in the um ambassadors channel.
Okay.
Did you want me to repost them somewhere? I'm assuming Peter's gonna put them on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, I I don't know if he's if he's going to be doing that though, because like I said, he's not feeling well. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on that either.
Oh, I hope we'll have him back by next week. He's not allowed to be sick more than one week.
Uh Walter has his hand up.
Yeah, Walter, go ahead.
Um on a serious note, um may I suggest that we do not kind of turn it into a popularity contest uh with a singular winner? Because that is likely to alienate the ones who haven't been picked. I think we shouldn't like embrace everyone who's interested in and capable of participating. So that's the underlying reason for assembling a team rather than picking a winner. Um so so that's kind of like my my thinking. It's best to if there are three people who really wanna make progress or you have something to contribute. We can assign them labels, but whatever they want, feel comfortable with. But in the end, it's all about their participation and contribution, not uh putting them in charge, you know?
Yeah, well, again, I'm not I'm not the one deciding it, I'm just collecting ideas here. So I'll take down everybody's ideas and we'll put it in either a decision software or in the chat and then everyone can vote on what this process should look like. I'm certainly not the one deciding it. But yeah, I guess thank you, everybody for your contribution. That's a lot more input than I expected. I thought everyone would be like, yeah, let's just throw up a vote next week and vote the person. I don't know, like everyone should send in a resume. I thought that's probably the way we're gonna go, but I guess not. Um we're gonna make it way more complicated, but that's the beauty of decentralization. Everybody has good ideas and everybody's ideas counts and that's just what it is. Um yeah, thank you, everybody for duck, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, so just just a quick one before we drop off the call. Um I think recently in the define and review circle, we had to um onboard a few um new persons ahead of DF four and a process was implemented to do that. You know, I said something in the chats earlier um a while ago and it was about not necessarily reinventing the wheel. There are uh procedures that we have employed in cases like this in times past that we can just um borrow ideas from. And um so the whole um the deep funny review cycle just came to mind now and Sucre, I think, um was directly responsible for setting that up. Um it was a pretty much straightforward form, but the questions on them were were strategic and detailed enough to be able to distill, you know, the quality of people that, you know, were needed to replace the the um or to complete the team for the review circle. We could implement that, you know, and um um build upwards from there. I just remember that now and I had to just chip that in. So maybe you want to talk to Sucre afterwards on how and what she did at the time. But it was pretty effective and we had really amazing people come on board. Thank you.
Yeah, good idea. I I saw the Google form and it was a really good questions. Um the question would then be who determines the questions? Should that be me or should that also be the group?
Um I think it should be, I think it should be you or it should be um 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 guild leaders or co contributors or something. Um but certainly not everybody, you know, maybe you or co contributors or guild leaders or something. I but I mean, we can think around that, we can agree to disagree on that.
All right, Kenichi.
Yeah, I just first of all, I wanted to ask, is this somewhere we are taking this uh conversation? Like uh somewhere to discuss about it moving forward and what the options are? So I mean, a lot of people actually are not present at this call. They might have other ideas they'd like to pitch before we move forward anything. And also as much as I think the review circle process might work, I would like to um I like the fact that there are huge differences between the requirements for the review circle and the requirements for a marketing guild lead. So I mean, that's very, very distinctive because a marketing guild lead, actually, when we can hold, look around the world and literally Google it and see expectations from what the marketing lead is supposed to have. So we have to always keep that at the back of our mind before we push out any ideas. And I know in the past, we weren't actually so stringent or who was actually doing what or who was leading what. But I if I don't know, I mean, most of the people where we were originating work groups and guilds, to be honest, I'm not really on this call right now. And I can say that uh back then, I think Tigo was of definitely. I mean, the whole idea was there had to be a bit of um understanding of what you are proposing. And the reason why you feel you're the perfect person to do this or why you are the one bringing up this idea before we lead forward with it. And I mean, when that was initially with Ro and myself with the videos and writing. So I mean, if we are going to put a bucket and lead, first of all, we need to also clear up the fact that this person needs to have a bit of understanding of what marketing is and how to implement it because they are a specifically unique group here. The ambassador program is one of a kind and this person needs to understand that to an effect. So that's why we need the person to both have naturally too skilled for even highlighting the marketing skills and understanding of the ecosystem and how the ambassador program works properly. Before they can also say they want to be the marketing lead. So I believe if that has been done or been added, and I'd like to know where this discussion will be taken further, basically. Before we can uh move forward or ideas further on uh what our options are.
Yeah, thank you for that input, that's um yeah, uh and and not a perspective. Um. William, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I uh I definitely want to say thank you very much for today, Judith. It it's been great, um thank you for moderating. Uh Kenichi, I think you're proposing that there should be another gathering or meeting to discuss this specific item further in regards to that leadership role, but you didn't say where you would like to do that. So I I think you, if you can clear that up and then then maybe we can figure out where to put that together so that i- if that helps us through the process to to get to next week where we're more prepared for this, then absolutely, I I agree with that idea a hundred percent. Anyways, Judith, thank you very much again today, I really appreciate your help.
Thank you, William. Well, thank you, everybody for jumping on. Um sorry, I was absolutely not prepared to do anything in this meeting other than propose the idea. And listen to some feedback of wow, this has been great. Um yeah, there's some work to do. Done, I I suppose everybody, everybody's end, but um definitely on my end for I'm probably gonna have to re-listen minimum once um to actually capture everybody's ideas fully. And I'll put those in writing in the marketing guild chat. And then actually, the best thing would probably be just to wait until next town hall. Like I'll I'll just gather the ideas so everybody can see the summary of it. And then we can figure out in next week's town hall if we wanna vote on these ideas. So if we would wanna close our eyes and pick one of those. I don't know how we wanna go about it, but now I'm just gonna gather the summary of this, cause this was a lot. Anyways, thank you, everybody for joining and I definitely hope to see you next week to continue this conversation as well as all the conversations we didn't get to today. Have a good morning, afternoon or evening, wherever you are, and see you next time. Bye bye.
Bye.
I think I let somebody in the room at the very last. I let somebody in the room at the very last second, I think that's the person that was trying to speak there. Uh but I don't see them here. It was a Wiki? No.
Sure.
A Wiki, did you have something you you wanted to say there before we wrapped up? No, I'm guessing not then.
Okay, also, I'm not the host, so I cannot close the meeting, I think Tevo, you would have to do that. So Tevo, if you have any last words, go ahead, you're the host.
Uh yeah, I have no last words. I was just trying to fix the power of AI and looking at the right this work group uh results and trying to make sense of that.
Then you're totally free to close the meeting or end the meeting.